It's 7:34. We'll call a regular city council meeting of August 5th to order. We do have a quorum. Stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off all cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda. Approve the agenda as posted in accordance with the open meeting law and here and place all agenda items on the table for discussion. I think we do need to add, under item E, the item that the mayor mentioned for...
Arnie's.
Arnie's restoration reimbursement. Um, 9E.
Oh, 9E, okay.
What is the wish of the council? Motion by Councilmember Canofla, second by Councilmember Goschek. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the minutes. Special work session meeting of July 15th, 2019, and the regular meeting of July 15th, 2019, approve. What is the wish of the council?
Motion to approve your minutes from our last meeting.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Storley, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the bills. Checks 100996 through 101094, totaling $1,5098.17, approve. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Awards, donations, presentations, and proclamations are none. Consent agenda. Airport commission minutes, June and July 2019, received. Animal control report, June and July 2019, received. Application to conduct off-site gambling raffle, Minnesota Fishing Museum, August 26, 2019, approved. Building report, May and June 2019, received. Economic development authority minutes, June and July 2019, received. Fire report, June 2019, received. Investment recap, dated June 30, 2019, received. Planning commission minutes, May 2019, received. Police report, June 2019, received. Recycling report, May 2019, received. Show license, Rustic Saloon, August 8 and September 7, 2019, approved. Temporary roadway closing, sidewalk closing, sidewalk display or promotion, Shops of Little Falls, August 13, 2019, approved. Temporary roadway closing, sidewalk closing, sidewalk display or promotion, Bonjos, August 27 to 29, 2019, approved. What is the wish of the council?
Motion to receive and/or approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Storley, second by Mayor Zilka. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Public hearings and lettings. Lettings, Environmental Services Landmark Environmental LLC. John?
Thank you, Council President. We do have a proposal from Landmark Environmental. This is to do the additional preparation on the plans for the cleanup for the property that is owned by multiple parties, but primarily around the Central Sota site. The city does have some property adjacent to it, and there is additional property owner in that area. We did get an award for deed application to reimburse some of this work. There are additional, potential additional deed grants available for the cleanup if there is a development plan for the property down the road. It doesn't have to be a finalized development plan, but a preliminary development plan would be needed, and we could then go after additional grant dollars for that. So, Landmark has done a number of different projects for the city in the past, including the Hennepin Papers site, so they are one of the premier ones in the state. Actually, the mayor and I at the CGMC conference a couple weeks ago saw them do a presentation on a shoreline restoration cleanup project that they did for the city of Amidji on the lake there. So, they really are ones that know this work, know how to navigate the system and maximize the grant potential. So, I feel very confident that they can work within this budget and also do the, follow the appropriate procedures so that we can seek reimbursement through the grant from deed.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to award Environmental Services Landmark Experimental, I mean, Environmental LLC.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Canofla for awarding the environmental services of Central Sota site. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Are these, is this the cost that's on page 43 of 68? Is that what is being charged?
That would be, yes, that would be the proposal for the scope of work. I'm not certain what the, usually there's grant reimbursement for a good portion of the work once it's been done, but you do need the, need to get to the point where you're going to do a cleanup plan before you do that or you get to it. So, it is, a lot of these are eligible for grant reimbursement costs, but that cost not to exceed the $37,240 is what is included. But we do have security that we have a grant award.
That's what we're approving today, not to exceed that, $37,240.
Yeah, not to exceed the $37,240.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Patchwork, Knife River North Central, award.
Thank you, Council President. Public Works Director came in and isn't able to be here tonight, so I'll try to give the information on this. There are a couple areas within the city that are, the streets, street repairs are beyond such that our typical cold patching that we use for potholes, to fill those potholes wouldn't be sufficient to keep those, to get those roadways at least conditioned so that they would survive through the winter with the following that we have to do. So, due to the project that we had with Highway 27 and the trails, we weren't able to get to some of those typical maintenance things that we normally would do, and some of them are beyond what our crews would do for maintenance. So, we are looking at contracting with Knife River to do these, the patchwork on the areas that we needed in the map. Probably the biggest example being Ninth Street, if anybody's driven that recently. It's not, you know, it's not your standard, you know, isolated pothole that's whatever, one by one, you know, that roads in, it's a pretty deep, tough condition. It is slated for improvement work that we are going to develop plans for and bring forward next year. Unfortunately, you know, we wouldn't be ready for that improvement until next year, and without doing something to it this year, it could really, really be detrimental, leaving that road in that condition through the course of the winter. So, hopefully, we can use this. It is only a temporary solution for that piece, but it would likely help us get that road through this winter so that it can get to the better, more permanent repair next year.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to award to Knife River North Central the patchwork not to exceed $36,113.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Old business. Change order number one, DeChantel Excavation Camp Ripley Veteran State Trail. John?
Thank you, Council President. Again, this is a change order for the Camp Ripley Veteran State Trail project. It is for additional granular borrow because they ran into areas where there was more topsoil than they expected. I'd say a pretty modest amount of $87,012.20. So, this has been approved also by DNR, who is funding this project.
What is the wish of the council? Motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order for DeChantel on the Veterans Trail.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Storley. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Request, petition, installation of stop signs, First Avenue and Seventh Street Southwest. Received July 1st, 2019, denied. John?
Thank you. Again, Greg had reviewed this, and staff had reviewed this petition for the four-way stop signs at First Avenue Southwest and Seventh Street Southwest. The recommendation is to deny that request as it doesn't meet the Minnesota Manual of Uniform Traffic Control device's standards for traffic control at that crossing.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation to deny the stop sign, the four-way stop southwest area.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Mayor Zilka to approve the recommendation to deny. So, if you're voting for the motion, you're agreeing to not put in the stop sign. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President. Is this, is, this isn't the road that runs down past Pine Grove, those apartments by, across by Pine Grove Zoo, is it? Is this the other road up to the east?
Southwest, on the west side, or on the south side.
South side of Rock.
Right. Right now, their detour runs up on Eighth Street, I believe, right? Or is that Seventh Street?
No, that's Eighth.
That's Eighth.
I believe that's Eighth, yeah.
Okay, because I noticed there's stop signs on every one of them corners, other than the one on First Avenue, or, yeah, First Avenue.
It's north of Lincoln School.
Okay, it's one, it's one block over from where I'm thinking. Because I was thinking that there could almost be a stop sign there with the Pine Grove Apartments there and a lot of the people that...
And with the detours, certainly, we can bring that forward to the contractors, and if it's temporary stop sign, you know, stop signs, they have been fairly accommodating to doing that when they, if it's more, they will look at it and do that. We had the same, you know, very similar situation with Fourth Street, First Avenue Southeast during the first, early stages of the project.
We were so upset.
That is a problem area because of the detours. We can definitely talk to the contractors in the state about putting a temporary signage.
Well, and I would agree, because I've seen people coming in from the west on 27 clipping pretty good, and there's a lot of traffic coming out to 27 from the north, and they just both saw an accident the other day because that one car pulled out and the other one was turning in without a signal light on it. So, I wouldn't think that would be a bad thing if we had one four-way there.
But this petition is for a permanent four-way stop, and we're denying, we're going to vote to deny it.
Yeah, on Seventh Streets, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
The petition was not, to my knowledge, related to the construction.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. New business. Accept recommendation of Airport Commission, Construction Administration, KLJ, Little Falls Morrison County Airport, approve. John?
Okay, thank you, Council President. This is, this is a recommendation from the Airport Commission as a plan to extend one taxi lane and rehabilitate a portion of the apron. They did receive a grant letter from the state, and they would be, would be, this project or this portion of the project for construction would be eligible for state reimbursement. So, it would be, recommendation here would be to contract for professional services with KLJ to develop those improvement plans and seek the funding to get it built. This may then need to further accessibility to additional funds for Crossman running projects down the road.
What is the wish of the council?
Motion to approve the Airport Commission recommendation to award KLJ the contract. I believe is what they're asking for there, correct?
Approve professional services to KLJ not to exceed $61,287.38.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Storley, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Petition, dis golf, receive. John, anything else to say from?
The area in which the petition that we've looked at, staff has researched some areas, and through the recommendation from the Park Recreation Tree Board, looking at a site around Labor J Park.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to receive the petition from Parks and Rec.
Second?
I don't think the petition is from Parks and Rec, though. I think it's from...
No, the petition is, is a signed petition from various people, residents and non-residents, but...
So, we're just accepting the petition?
Yeah, I think it's the, I, it was indicated in the memo that Park Board had been, had received requests, had received the petition.
When it's a petition, we just need a motion and a second? No vote? Okay.
And a no vote, you need to hold on until I'm sorry.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Petition, Vacation Alley, Thayer's Edition, received. John?
So, this petition is for the alley, Vacation of the Alley in Thayer's Edition, and this is the alley between, looks like between Fifth Street and Sixth Street Northwest and then between Fourth Avenue and Fifth Avenue Northwest. It is currently not a developed parcel.
What is the wish of the council?
Motion to receive the petition to vacate the Thayer's Edition alley.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Storley, second by Councilmember Canofla. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Resolution 2019-51, declare surplus property, administration desks and vehicles, adopt. Lori?
Yes, Council President and City Council, we have several vehicles that we would like to declare surplus. Some of them are police forfeiture vehicles, others are vehicles that we own through the city that we don't use anymore. We also have a couple of desks that we would declare surplus. All of these items would be sold through the auction along with other items we declared surplus of even earlier this year.
What is the wish of the council?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2019-51, Declaration of Surplus Property.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Storley, second by Councilmember Goschek to adopt Resolution 2019-51. Is there any discussion? Resolution, call a roll, please.
Canofla?
Yes.
Lundberg? Yes. Zilka?
Yes.
Hurkoff?
Yes.
Storley?
Yes.
Busher?
No.
Carries?
Arnie restoration reimbursement. Don't know that we have a motion. We discussed it, to bring it up. I don't know if you want to make a motion.
I would make a motion to reimburse the Arnie family a minimum of $350 for restoration of their property.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Goschek. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. You said a minimum of $350. Is that the motion that you want to make, or is that a maximum of $350?
Well, I was kind of taken off on what you had mentioned. Is he going to be happy with that? And I forgot I was going to add for John or Greg to negotiate up to 700, but I, you know, and I'm laying all the cards on the table right now because of this discussion, which isn't a bad thing. You know, we're a public entity, it's supposed to be out front, but that's what my thought process was, just so we didn't have to keep coming back here. Okay, let's try 450, let's try 550. So, I would, I'll leave it at a minimum of 350 because I, I mean, I would hope that we, that he would take that as in good faith.
Would you accept the amendment up to 350, and if he doesn't accept that, that he comes before the council and makes the request for what he will accept?
Well, he's been before the council before. I think it's something that we, it's going to be tough to negotiate before the council. Or I could just leave it at 350, resend it. I'm amiable in either way. I just am trying to prevent having to go back and forth with him in a public entity, where it'd be much easier to just take care of it. John, any thoughts on that, you probably be negotiating?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would say leaving it to myself to just close the, you know, just close the deal with them on it, with direction as to what we'd be authorized to offer.
Why don't we just offer them $350 and just be done with it?
And if he has any discussion, if that isn't satisfactory, I'll, I'll allow me to work with him, but for what the next proposal would be. But I would, I would think leaving it to 350 would be potentially acceptable in terms of what it would have cost us if we would have done that for restoration as we indicated we were going to do.
And that's why I would have even been willing to, just because I met with him, just say, hey, would you be happy with this? My understanding is he probably would, so I can, you know, I, how about I leave it the way I presented it and was second, and if it gets voted down, can we present another one, or is that just kill everything? We can present another one.
Why don't you just resend your motion?
No.
Well, I don't think it's been seconded, so if nobody's seconded it, it would be, okay.
Well, and I'm just looking at what's in the best interest. I don't want to go to 700 because, once again, I think we're, I don't want it to look like we're doing the hookup already. So, okay, I'll resend my motion.
But just, the one, the one thing I don't want, the one thing I don't want happening, Mr. President, is where the, where the city thinks they can come and negotiate things with us. You know, I'd rather just agree to a set amount, and if they don't accept it, that's one thing, but otherwise, we got people in here wanting to negotiate, well, I needed to re-sod this or redo that, so I want this much, you know? I just don't want us to get into negotiating.
But ironically, you're the one that brought it up and said, what if he doesn't take that, does he come back before the council? So, to me, that's negotiating also. So, I'll make a motion to offer the Arnie family $350, which should cover the labor, the seeding, and the black dirt.
I'll second that.
Leave a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Goschek to reimburse $350. Any other discussion?
Yes, I think that's a fair price. If the city would have did it, it wouldn't cost us anymore. You know, by the time you buy the seed and have our workers there and water it, we probably have about $350 into it. So, I think this is a fair, fair offer.
For both sides.
Yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. City council reports and city authorities, boards, bureaus, commissions, and committees. Anyone have anything?
Council President, I would like to share the update, kind of reiterating what Scott talked about in our work session in the Coalition Greater than So cities with the summer conference, got great updates with them, a lot of really valuable information and perspective about the last legislative session and the success of getting the LGA funds back, but the continued work that's necessary to do in the upcoming sessions, because, as you said, there's, there are advocates for it, and then there are people that were vocally opposed, and we saw some clips of some of their statements that put, you know, it definitely puts some threatening language behind LGA, and it is a very critical component of our general fund budget. It definitely saves us a lot in property taxes, as we're going to be getting into this budgetary season very soon. Likely, keep in mind, we're going to need a special session around budget time, too, and I know it was discussed, too, in the work session, of creating a special session around discussion about efforts to go after low-batch sales tax again. So, just keep that in mind over the next couple weeks as we look at your calendars between the end of August and the beginning of September, looking at identifying time and also that meeting, maybe finding the other.
Mr. President, I would add to that also, that at the conference, we got some really good information on housing. There is a great presentation on that. We've got a lot of contacts of some potential assistance for the housing that's needed on Little Falls for workforce housing, so...
I'll add to that. We've worked, we've had meetings with some of those groups before, and we've worked with them on some past projects, and now, as we're getting closer and certainly the demand with, you know, the Bear project and other employers in town that are hiring, you know, with that workforce housing issue, as you've heard, is a very statewide issue for a lot of communities, too. So, it is something that we, we have, we have those connections, and we have, we've had those past histories working with some of these groups that do these projects.
And one guy said, we actually have more money than we do requests, so we're looking for more requests. Can't beat that.
Actually, a question, sorry, it's from earlier, with the land cleanup thing. I know they'll put their plan together, it sounded like just a couple weeks. How long of a process is it to clean it up, or we don't know until they do their report?
They'll take the report. This is the more in-depth plan about what it's going to take to get the property cleaned up. The first phase, the first phase of the work is discovery, finding out what's there. Next phase is, you know, what is it taking, what is it going to take to mitigate it?
Thank you.
In that process, they're going to do some soil samplings and drilling down so far?
Getting, getting a lot more tighter delineation on where the contaminants are located, what sort of depths you're going to, going to need. They have, you know, I have some estimates, but those were just preliminary so that they could prove that things did exist there, there were contaminants. Now, it's figuring out exactly more, more specifically as to where it is and how to clean it up. And with that, the reason why I mentioned earlier about the development plan being a critical component to the next phases of grant work, is that you need to know what the planned use of the property is going to be in order to make the final determination of what the final cleanup is going to be, because different uses of property are going to require different levels of cleanup. So, if it were going to stay as an industrial use like it was, it wouldn't take as much of a cleanup level. But if it goes, reverts into something that's residential, well, then it's going to take the most, most restrictive or, you know, the most thorough cleanup level that's going to be required in order to access grant. So, that's why we really do need that next step of what is the plan in place afterwards, but this is really a critical, critical phase into figuring out what that gauge is, what that range is going to be in terms of those total cleanups, so you can best...
best reuse the property in a, in a way that, um, you know, falls within its, its use, um, what it's gonna take to clean it up and what really the community is, is gonna demand for, you know, being able to use that property in the future.
What is that zone?
Right now it is zone residential. It was rezoned, rezoned that in the last...
Recently, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It should be residential.
Any announcements? Not while our journey at eight oh five.